Going to call the meeting to order. Good evening. My name is John Samia and I'm the Chair of the Shrewsbury Board of Selectmen. On behalf of my fellow board members and the Town Manager's Office, I want to welcome you to our April 5th, 2022 Board of Selectmen meeting. Tonight's live broadcast is being brought to you by Mark Sarah of the Shrewsbury Media Connection. In addition to tonight's live broadcast on Channels 30, 330, and Facebook, tonight's meeting will be rebroadcast on the same channels from tomorrow until our next regularly scheduled meeting, next Tuesday, April 12th, 2022. And finally, tonight's meeting also will be available on the Shrewsbury Media Connection YouTube platform starting tomorrow. All of our previous meetings are also currently available on the same platform for your viewing pleasure. First item on the agenda is in the preliminaries, any announcements or reports? There being none, let's go to the next item under Financial Business, Review Municipal Budget. Mr. Mizikar.
Yeah, thank you. Good evening, board members. I just wanted to provide a recap of last week's hearing process with the Finance Committee. Two public hearings were held where we touched on each and every department within the municipal budget, and that included the School Department School Committee coming in. Those hearings were held on March 24th and March 26th, which of course many of you had attended. I found the, you know, presentations were both enlightening as to the performance and accomplishments of the departments, and we were able to have a discussion about the upcoming priorities, which including any staffing level changes for the upcoming fiscal year 23. So, as we look forward beyond that detailed review of the fiscal year 23 budget, we will be bringing back to the Board of Selectmen next Tuesday, your regularly scheduled meeting, Fiscal Projection II, which will include any and all revisions associated with the warrant that we seek to finalize this evening, and then some other adjustments within the operating and capital improvement plans. That will roll quickly into the Finance Committee hearings on each and every warrant article starting on next Thursday, April 14th. And if we're not finished on the 14th, two weeks later on April 28th, we'll resume those proceedings. So, we're in the final stretch in the run-up to the town meeting on May 21st, and just appreciated everyone's attendance and contributions at those hearings.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Okay, go to the, thank you. We'll go to the next item under New Business, to review an act assigned the warrant for the May 21st, 2022 Annual Town Meeting. Mr. Mizikar.
Thank you. So, before the board this evening is the Annual Town Meeting Warrant and Election Warrant. The election is on Tuesday, May 3rd, and at various precincts. I do want to remind voters in Precinct 2 that your polling location will be moved from the Town Hall to the Senior Center, which is also on the 100 Maple Avenue campus. So, beyond the election warrant, I'll move into the various warrant articles that are included on the Annual Town Meeting Warrant. This evening, we have 48 articles for the board to consider including on the warrant, and I will take those articles in various levels of detail, but I'm happy to answer any questions or spend more time reviewing those with the board members. So, Article 1 is a standing article to receive reports that weren't included in the Annual Town Report. Article 2 is a proposed article by Moderator Kane to change the governance structure, parliamentary rules for our town meeting from Cushing's Manual to Town Meeting Time. Article 3 would be to transfer funds if needed for bills from a prior fiscal year, which we have none at this time. Article 4 would be to make transfers within the current fiscal year budget, which we have none at this time. Article 5 is the fiscal year 23 budget. Article 6 is to receive funds from Selco from the Cable TV Division, $800,000 their annual payment to the town. Article 7 is receiving funds from the Municipal Light Department in lieu of taxes, $237,000. Article 8 is to transfer $500,000 from free cash to the Board of Assessors to offset the tax rate. Article 9, this is the second year that we'll be adding funding to Special Purpose Stabilization, a Special Purpose Override Stabilization Account. This account is being set up to maintain the duration of the override. And as we discussed at the beginning in the budget process, the current plan that's in place will provide for one additional year beyond the four-year commitment that the board made to the community. So, we'll propose to put $3 million into the Special Purpose Override Stabilization Fund. Article 10 is the General Capital Improvement Budget. It includes various projects and capital investments for the upcoming fiscal year. There are a couple of changes that we'll propose in detail out with Fiscal Projection II at your meeting next week, but in brief, we've moved out the funding for the Oak Middle Schools because that needs to be in a separate standalone article, and can't be included in the general capital budget. And we are moving to a two-year payment plan for the Police, CAD, and RMS system. So, overall, the general capital improvement plan will be lower than it is presented in Fiscal Projection 1, but really fund the same amount of projects in the end, just for means. Article 11 is the curbside solid waste collection operating budget. Article 12 is the operating budget for Sewer. Article 13 is the capital improvement budget for Sewer. 14, operating budget for Water. 15, capital budget for Water. We are fleshing out the capital improvement plans for all of the utilities, and we'll provide further update to them through Fiscal Projection II on Tuesday, a week from tonight. 18 is the operating budget for Stormwater. 17 is the capital improvement plan for Stormwater. Article 18 is where we break out the requested funding for the Oak Middle School Window and Door Project. This is the MSBA required language. And, board members, we are seeking approval to borrow any necessary funds for this project. MSBA always requires local municipalities to appropriate the full amount of funding associated with the construction of the project. Because MSBA will actually be reimbursing us 52.26% of all eligible costs, I never anticipate needing to borrow, but I do have to illustrate to the MSBA that we have full funding for the project, even including what they intend to contribute to us. That will all be formalized through a project funding agreement with MSBA, which I anticipate occurring near the end of August. Article 19 is a standing warrant article each and every annual town meeting where we pay the out-of-pocket medical expenses of retired disabled police and firefighters. This will be a traditional amount, somewhere around $5,000. Article 20, this is the second time that we'll be placing funds into Insurance Trust Fund, which we'll use over the years to pay for any deductibles associated with general liability insurance, workers' comp insurance, where needed. Article 21 will be to add $750,000 to the general stabilization account. Article 22 will be to fund the operations of Shrewsbury Media Connection, where we receive funds in from the franchise fee through Selco, and transfer those out for SMC operations. This year, we are also proposing a $12,000 appropriation from the tax levy to fund the costs associated with filming and producing the public meetings that SMC covers for the town. Article 23 will set the annual revolving account limits, associated with Article 22 in the general bylaws. Article 24 will be receive all funds under the Chapter 90 program through the Commonwealth. Again, this year, we anticipate just shy of a million dollars coming in for Chapter 90 for fiscal year 23. Article 25, excuse me, is a standing warrant article where we'll transfer $18,000 to the Cemetery Department for Care, Improvement, and Embellishment of the Cemetery. Article 26 is to appropriate funds to make them available for funding water quality improvements and other initiatives for lakes, ponds, and waterways. This is a standing warrant article with a little bit of a twist this year. We normally appropriate these funds with the intention of all of them going to the Lake Quinsigamond Association. However, there are other bodies of water within the town of Shrewsbury that aren't a part of the Lake Quinsigamond watershed that need study, attention, and invasive weed mitigation, so we intend to be broader with the intent of the article, so we can use them beyond the Lake Quinsigamond Association.
I have a question. So then, who would oversee the funds?
My proposal would be they'd be done through the Parks and Recreation Department with Angela Snell. As you know, Angela has frequently participated with the Lake Quinsigamond Association, has been our staff conduit, so I'd propose them under Parks and Recreation.
Just another, so then, would the Lake Quinsigamond Association still have the same amount of dollars that they would normally have, and then there's additional funding on top of that to address other waterways?
Yeah. We propose $30,000 this year, so as we've moved into more of an ongoing maintenance of Lake Quinsigamond Association and the weed, the removal of the invasive weeds, it's, you know, gone down a little bit because we're not doing studies or anything there. So, we believe that $30,000 is sufficient, and this will give us a little bit of flexibility if it's not, you know, perfect $20,000 throughout the course of the year.
Thank you.
Sure. Article 27 is a proposal to seek funding for the development of a Climate Action and Resiliency Plan. As we all know, the town faces climate challenges, and we've worked over the years through the Commonwealth's Municipal Vulnerability Program to identify ways to mitigate the impacts of climate change. This project would seek consultants and support to help us develop a resiliency plan, and also find ways for the town as a local government organization to reduce its impact on climate change, reducing our greenhouse gas emissions, our carbon footprint, and provide advice and information, but not demands or requirements upon the residents of Shrewsbury. So, we're proposing $140,000 to cover the development of this plan. However, we are seeking municipal vulnerability funding through the current round, so we may not have to use all of Shrewsbury's dollars. We'll leverage those state grants where possible, because a plan like this is eligible for reimbursement and funding through the MVP program. Article 28 is requesting funding to develop and fund a Town Center Comprehensive Transportation and Multimodal Study. As the board is aware, as we've worked through the Town Center Visioning and other projects, including the redevelopment of 1 through 7 Maple Avenue, and to complement other studies that we've already done, including wayfinding signage and parking analysis, which we've done over the prior few years. We believe it's important to really perform a detailed analysis of motor vehicle traffic in the town center to determine current call vol, or excuse me, current traffic volumes in the area, do a comprehensive analysis beyond the scope of any single project to determine the flow of traffic, where vehicles are coming from, where they're heading to as it relates to the town center, investigate the impacts of tractor trailers and heavy-duty motor vehicles in the town center, work with any local operators of trucking companies to find alternative routes outside of the town center, and also enhance ways for residents and other citizens to find non-motor vehicle-based ways to access the town center for the shops and restaurants that it's available. So, we'll look at pedestrian opportunities, bicycle opportunities, and other things like that. So, we really think this is important and a continuation of the work that we've already started. While it is true there'll be certain studies, traffic studies done in connection with any redevelopment that's done in the town center, including 1 through 7 Maple Avenue, this is a much broader scope and is greater than just an individual site or a project area. Article 29 will become a familiar article to town meeting members in the coming years. It's our first time that we'll be moving funds that we received in fiscal year 22 and anticipate receiving in fiscal year 23, brought in under the Community Preservation Act, through and for the Community Preservation Committee. So, unlike future years, which will always just be forward-looking, this year, we have to take care of fiscal year 22, where we started collecting funds in July, and then we're also projecting out for fiscal year 23 and using the state projected matching funds percentage that is directed to each and every individual municipality. So, the total projected revenues, including the state match, for fiscal year 22 is $1,025,700, and fiscal year 23 is $1,046,214. There are three categories, or four total categories, three primary categories where funds are transferred to. The first is 5% of total funding must go to administrative expenses. The second area is 10% must go to historic resources. Excuse me. The third area is community housing, and the fourth is open space and recreation. And all remaining funds go into a general budgeted reserve account, which is held and can be expended on any of the above categories of historic community housing and open space and recreation. So...
Mr. Apollo.
Mr. Mizikar, before we go ahead, I think it's great that we raised as much money as we did, or at least we're projected to, but when this was going through the process of being approved, the number that really was anticipated was around 450. And I know, I even ran it by house because I wanted to see if it was valid, and then I had to verify with Mr. Edie when he was here, around 450. This is based on a percent, it's a percentage, which is based on the value, right?
That's correct, yep.
Did anybody look at how we went, and I'm not saying it's a bad thing, but how did we go from like 450 or so to 789 in the space of a year? If that was based on values, they'd have to have gone up, what, 40%?
Interestingly enough, not trying to be negative to any town staff, but the Community Preservation Advocates actually projected around $700,000 whenever they were making presentations. We went back and looked at their figures. I can tell you that regardless of the initial projections, that the $789,000, we have the benefit of hindsight, that's what we actually build out, based upon the assessed value in fiscal year 22. So, it accounts for the $100,000 that was exempted on each and every individual property, and, you know, includes all taxable parcels beyond that. So, this is the most detailed that we can get, it's what we actually build out, and I agree with you, it is different than the initial projection, but...
I was just curious if the values went up that much?
I don't believe that that is the case, that it's just a value issue. I think there might have been something that was missed in the original calculation.
Well, okay, I follow up off-line, because I came up with the same number, we went it a different way, and it's kind of weird. But anyways, maybe this is what it is, I guess.
All right. So, Article 30 is the first of a series of articles to amend the zoning bylaw, and this is relative to Section 4 of the zoning bylaws, continuance of existing structures relative to pre-existing non-conforming single and two-family residential structures. Board members, there is accompanying detailed documentation, and we've reviewed all these articles with the town planning staff. I'm happy to answer any questions that there may be. I will point out any changes from the prior conversations about this. Article 31 is to amend the zoning bylaw with regarding to site plan approval for the planning board, to require proposed slopes of a certain height and grade to be subject to site plan approval. Article 32 is to insert a provision to allow the town clerk to make any non-substantive changes to the numbering and lettering of the zoning bylaw each and every year when we make changes to it. Article 33 is to amend Article 7-L regarding common driveways and modifying dimensional requirements and use restrictions of those driveways. Article 34 is to amend the zoning bylaws with regard to parking lot landscaping and screening requirements within the limited industrial zoning district. Article 35, I do want to point out a change that is proposed from the prior presentation. You'll remember a presentation that was made at your last meeting by advocates for this article from GFI Partners. This article would move two aspects of the limited industrial zoning district bylaw into the realm of a special permit to be considered by the planning board. The first is with regards to building height. Currently, building height is 50 feet or less is permissible by right. Anything above 50, greater than 50 feet, would require a zoning variance by the ZBA. This proposes to allow the use through the permission of the planning board to grant a special permit from any height greater than 50 feet up to 75. Prior and through the feedback that we received and heard at that presentation, this is more limiting, and the original proposal was just to allow a special permit for anything greater than 50 feet, but we did cap it at 75. If any entity required a building height of greater than 75 feet in this zoning district, they would be able to seek a variance through the ZBA, so the higher stricter process. So, I just wanted to highlight that we're adding language in there to restrict it between greater than 50 feet up to 75 feet. The second aspect that would be permissible through a special permit would be to allow for loading and unloading at the front of a building. Again, this is because our current zoning only permits loading and unloading for the rear of the building, and oftentimes, that's in conflict with adjacent parcels, and it makes more sense to have loading and unloading at the front. So, through a special permit, the planning department would be able to grant that, again, in the limited industrial zoning district. Article 36 is a part of our steps to help offset the impacts of climate change and plant more trees within the community, and it will be to help develop and regulate tree care and maintenance, known, which would be known through the general bylaws, is the Town of Shrewsbury Tree Bylaw, sets up various parameters and puts the responsibility for oversight for public trees into a Forestry Commission of five members, which would be appointed by the Board of Selectmen. Article 37 begin in a series of articles carry through on the board's commitment to provide tax relief to residents, especially those of lower income and senior citizens, as we took on the operational override last spring. So, these articles, which were developed through and in conjunction with the Board of Assessors and the principal assessor, draw upon various general laws and increase or allows the Board of Assessors to increase the maximum allowable abatements and exemptions that are permitted to be granted to the taxpayers of Shrewsbury, and it also allows for the adjustment of the total receipts and assets upward to provide relief to a greater number of individuals, especially since it's been quite some time since those values were adjusted here for the town. So, there's various provisions that you'll find from Articles 37, 38, 39, and 40 that are all associated with that, with those provisions for taxpayer relief.
Mr. DePaulo.
Mr. Mizikar, changing that senior exemption from what it currently is now to a higher amount and a higher income, it could, it should hopefully open it up to more people. That's covered by the overlay, right?
It is covered by the overlay, and in certain circumstances, state reimbursements, so it's not fully borne by the residents.
But have you anticipated that and proposed to increase the overlay?
Yeah, we have.
Okay. You know, I figured you did, but I just, for some reason, I just thought of it just now.
Yep. Article 41 and 42 are associated with the retirement system, the town's retirement system. Article 41, for the first time for the town, now that we've achieved fully funding as of January 1st, 2021, increases the base of a retiree's pension that's subject to a cost of living adjustment. So, currently, only the first $12,000 of a pensioner's income is increased anytime a cost of living adjustment is recommended by the Shrewsbury Retirement Board, and this proposal would raise the base up from $12,000 to $14,000. Again, $12,000 is the minimum that each and every retirement system must apply a cost of living adjustment to. The maximum currently is $18,000, so this moves it up 2,000 from $12,000 to $14,000. Article 42 would allow the increase of the retirement allowance for retirees retired for accidental disability, to pay the cost of, excuse me, which would allow those who have been retired for those purposes to see their base pension increase to 50% of the current position from which they retired from. So, for instance, an individual who was a police patrolman who is retired for accidental disability would see their base pension percentage based upon 50% of a current patrol officer's wage, rather than the wage that was set by Town Meeting on May 18th, 1988. So, it has been some time, I think we made an adjustment in the 1990s to that amount as well, but basically, this is providing for a meaningful means for individuals who were disabled in the line of duty while working for the town of Shrewsbury to allow them to receive additional pension funding. We only have a handful of retirees, two or three at this point, that that would benefit, but it has been quite some time, and we were waiting for the full funding of the retirement system to be able to confer a greater benefit to those. In those funds, no additional appropriation would be required, they will be available in the proposed budget. Article 43 is, I'd like to call it a housekeeping article, but is a significant housekeeping article that's taken a lot of work and effort over the course of really the last almost full year, to transfer 105 parcels of land that are currently just held under the title and control of the tax title custodian to the Town Manager's Office to be held for general municipal purposes and for the purpose of conducting a planning study for each parcel to determine its current, or its appropriate future use. So, these 105 parcels were taken over the last decades for non-payment of taxes, formally foreclosed upon, and are just sitting there in limbo. They cannot be used for any other municipal purposes, as they're currently designated. And further, this is the least protected category as far as any adverse possession or other claims against these properties. So, I just wanted to acknowledge the work of Justin Dobson in the Town Manager Board of Selectmen's office, and also, obviously, Selectmen DePaulo's work from Town Lands Committee, and continuing with Justin on this initiative to identify these 105 parcels of land. It really does, for the benefit of all taxpayers, put them in a more protected class, but we're also all dedicated to continuing... but we're also all dedicated to continuing our study and providing further designation for the use of these lands where general municipal purpose doesn't make sense. They could be in the future transferred for conservation, open space, recreation, parkland, potentially affordable housing purposes in the future. So this will be the, an important first step to protect the assets of the taxpayers of Shrewsbury and then find a better and higher use for these properties in the future. Article forty-four is similar to Article forty-three, but includes three particular parcels of land that the town acquired through all of or partially parts of land through tax title foreclosure. It would transfer those from the tax title custodian to the Board of Selectmen and further authorize the Board of Selectmen to any disagreements to dispose of said land. These particular pieces of land include thirty-three Eaton Avenue, twenty-six Cedar Road, twenty-five Harvard Avenue, and two-ten North Quincyman Avenue. Thirty-three Eaton Avenue, twenty-five Harvard Avenue, and two-ten North Quincyman Avenue all have encroachments upon them by abutters. These individual abutters who have encroached upon the land are seeking relief partially from the town by acquiring. However, each and all four of these parcels would have to be put through a competitive process. We're not able to negotiate in a private real estate, one-on-one real estate transaction with everyone, anyone, under the general laws. So these lands at minimum would be made available to abutters if that's our only obligation, and it's broadest spectrum through a sealed bid process. So these encroachments are upon tax title lands, and there's no further restrictions. So this is why we're looking to clean up the use of these lands and potentially transfer them if the board so chooses to place this article and deems it appropriate. Twelve Cedar Road is similar in all contexts, except for there is no encroachment upon it. We've been approached by an abutter to that property who is seeking to acquire the land and potentially build an addition onto their single-family home. It's important to note on all these properties that the purchaser would bear all subdivision costs where necessary, and we would record deed restrictions to not permit future development beyond a single-family home from Cedar Road when it's connected to its adjacent fourteen Cedar Road. So happy to answer any questions on these four particular properties. There's a little bit of nuance there, but on three of them, we're working with abutters who are encroaching upon town land, and the one is free and clear, but there's interest from an abutter.
Any questions?
I have a question. I just think that if people are watching this and trying to understand how one ends up in a situation where they're encroaching on town land and why these four properties are different from the ones in the article above. Like, would you just be able to speak to that a little bit?
Sure. So the parcels identified on the articles above, except in some instances where there's town-owned buildings on them, there are private encroachments upon them. These encroachments have occurred seemingly in air over the years as it's kind of an adjacent piece of land next to a privately owned lot that, you know, slowly and surely over time, people have expanded the footprint of their property or in some instances have actually bought property with a driveway or a shed, you know, on an adjacent parcel. So while we're just trying to clean up things in Article forty-three and move them into a more protected class so we can more actively prevent encroachments and require them to be removed, these particular properties, the town is in, on a few of them, potentially subject to adverse possession, but we found, found an amicable approach with the encroachers and abutters to potentially sell the land to them.
Thank you.
Can I just follow?
Mr. DePaul, go ahead.
I think it's why Article forty-three is so important, that we need to, we get this land protected. It's a significant amount of, right now, open space, just around Jordan Pond. Some of the land that was tax titled, we found out subsequently, had been changed to playground, so it's protected in conservation through town meeting action, but it kind of got lost in the shuffle, so it is protected. But, you know, just Jordan Pond has over forty-three acres of land that was taken as tax title. Actually, more than that, but what, what the town kept after we transferred land to the Housing Authority, some of it to the school. There's a lot of pieces of property around town that really contributes to the open space, and if we don't protect it, we're going to be subject to these adverse possession claims. You know, for some reason, way back when the land was taken down in the pond area, for some reason, the, how was that B decided not to sell that land? There were other parts to those parcels that were sold from Route nine all the way down to the pond, Worthington Ave and all of that, but they, they were, they had enough foresight to protect that land around the pond, and I think we have an obligation for land, not just around the pond, because like I said, we found out that it was protected because town meeting did move the properties from tax title to playground or to conservation. But in other parts of town, it's not the case, and there's some nice pieces of land that I think we, we need to work on to protect.
Can I just follow? I think you made a really good point, too, in that this isn't something that just happened like a year ago or two years ago. Like, I know in a conversation that I had with you, you were telling me you were looking at town meeting books from decades ago to try to trace the land, and this is like cleanup from like decades ago, transfers of land.
Actually, there was land taken for tax title a hundred years ago. Literally, and it just sat there, which is good because it's part of our open space, but hopefully town meeting will along with making those changes.
Right, and now we have like so much better systems for record keeping. Cleaning all this up is a huge task, but it's one that definitely needs to be done, as you said, to protect all of the town land and make sure that it's classified correctly.
Two quick questions. How many total acres? I know.
I, I don't know how many total, but I know the land around Jordan Pond, just around Jordan Pond, that was taken was, was forty-three.
It's approximately ninety-six acres of the land.
Great. And then, do we know if there are any, other than town buildings that are there now, any structures that were left there from years ago as part of the taking? Do we know? Is it, are any environmental concerns or possibilities? We wouldn't know that.
There are several parcels.
Do you want to come up to it? Come on up.
Yeah.
Going to introduce yourself, too, if you wouldn't mind?
Yeah, so I'm Justin Dobson from the Town Manager and Board of Selectmen's Office. I've been working with Selectmen DePaulo on a couple of these articles, Article forty-three and forty-four. So the, the total acreage is about ninety-six acres. There are several properties where I have found, you know, small encroachments, whether it's, you know, an old shed or what have you. Because some of the properties we, we took, and then the, the person we probably took it from just left a building on the property, but no major structures that have been, that have been left. Usually sheds, outbuildings like that.
And do we know when it, I don't know if the deeds had it, well, it probably wouldn't. The, whether or not there were any commercial businesses on any of the land, is it something, yeah? Okay. I'm just curious.
They were commercially, there were some that were commercially owned. You know, I don't recall, well, the only one that actually took tax title, we sold it because we didn't want to own it, was the Allen Funeral Home. But there's not, if there was something like that, I, I didn't see anything in the records to get.
No, the majority of them, like Selectmen DePaulo referenced, are open space. So parcels that either wrap around subdivisions or there are various parcels in what was referred to as a general ward manor, which is across from Dean Park, towards the end of Main Boulevard. So Main Boulevard, if you aren't familiar, there's kind of a section of it in the middle where the road doesn't connect. It wraps around, and there are several parcels in that neck of the woods. So little parcels in between homes and neighborhoods.
Yeah, the only reason I was asking, too, just in case there were industries a hundred years ago where they didn't quite have the same thoughts in terms of the environment, that if we, were we possibly gaining exposure if we convert from tax title over or not? But if we're comfortable that these are mostly lots or residential lots, and there wasn't any manufacturing in the days when things just went into the ground, that's, that's where I was going with it.
Well, the town still owns them, whether they're in tax title or not, so we still have a liability, but I don't recall seeing any gas stations or a tannery, the leather, leather factory down there. It was not, I don't remember seeing anything like that. Most of it was, the land that we took and we kept appears to be mostly open. There, there were properties, you know, around the time of the depression and after that, there were houses that were ever taken, but they were sold.
Okay.
So out of that, that area down on, down by Jordan Pond, that really, that taking on one side of the pond, on the Worthington side, was eighty-four acres, and like half of it was sold off. Some of it was houses, some of it was for lots, so I don't remember seeing anything like that.
Okay, thank you. Now, thanks also for the hard work that you've done. Some of the deeds that you had in handwriting are descriptions of traditional meets and bounds by.
Oh, those, those are great. I just waste time, but it'd be, I saw one today to a stump of an oak tree back in like eighteen-something. It's like, you know, in the edge of the stream or a pile of stones. It's, it's really amazing that that's the way they did it, but it worked, I guess.
Thanks for your hard work on that. That was a lot of work. Work that's continuing.
Justin's a great owner. He could start his own business like.
Title examiners.
He picked it up a lot faster than I did, I'll tell you that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Article forty-five is for the town meeting to consider the acceptance of two public ways, one a portion of Lake Street due to realignment associated with the development of the school at two-fourteen Lake and the acceptance of Commerce Road as a public way. Article forty-six is a proposal to amend the general bylaws and for the Board of Selectmen to petition the General Court for a special act to change the name of the Board of Selectmen to the Select Board.
Can I ask you a question?
Mr. DePaul.
I don't have a problem being done the neutral, but if we're petitioning the General Court, we can't, and it's a home rule petition, right? Isn't it a home rule petition? So.
It is to amend the acts of nineteen fifty-three.
Yeah, so we couldn't change our names to a town council or an executive board, even with a home rule petition specific to our town?
Our consultation with the Attorney General's Office led to a lot of potential challenges and issues with that, if that was the approach that we were to take. As you're familiar, council in the Commonwealth and the general laws is associated with the city form of government. In some towns, like the Town of Franklin, who is actually, under the city form of government, refer to themselves or are known as a town council. So since that is not our form of government, that would be in conflict in any interpretation, broad interpretation of the general laws. And further, it wasn't felt that other titles that previously haven't been used in the Commonwealth would be appropriate or applicable, as they wouldn't be able to be referenced to the overarching governing structure that's found in the, in the general laws. So those are the results that we got from the Attorney General when we inquired through town council is to keep in alignment with what the general laws have and stay as close there, too, as we can while going gender neutral.
And with executive board, it was basically to pass at your own risk if we wanted to do that. They said it's not there, so this is the only clear guidance we were given that would work.
Right, and when it, you know, so when it would say general, when it would say Board of Selectmen in any general law, and if we had a executive board, there's just not a clear reference to, you know, that line of authority that's being granted into the Town of Shrewsbury.
Mr. LeBeau.
Well, first a comment. I think that guidance from the Attorney General is, doesn't make a whole lot of practical sense. I'll simply say that. I'm just curious, I know it's short money. How much you think this change is going to cost us? Signage?
I haven't put a number on it that I have to think about.
So we'll have signage here in the building, there will be four name plaques, business cards. I mean, there's going to be some cost. I mean, I'm not at all suggesting that the costs, you know, supersede the desire to have this, but there will be, I mean, any organization knows, you make it, fortunately, we don't print stationery in advance anymore. Okay, I'd be curious to know.
Yeah, we can get an estimate of that.
You need pens, too. Related to that, may I ask?
Sure, please.
What will we refer to ourselves as select person, select man and woman? Like, are we? Select board member?
Actually, it's select person. I mean, it's.
Select person?
That's a general term that's used, but I think a gender-specific use by an individual would be appropriate as well.
I was just at a conference this weekend that was part of the MMA through the Women Elected Municipal Leaders, and in the paper that was handed out, people were called select board member. That's what it said.
It's a big thing on the bottom of your logo.
Have to have a larger.
If I may, to Mr. LeBeau's point, we probably should have a cost estimate because someone's going to ask us at town meeting.
I may.
But it is something that can be done gradually. We don't necessarily have to. Like, we can repurpose things and do it over time, I would think.
Can we keep our hats and say select?
I think also, though, it has to be approved by the Attorney General before we can change it, right? Wasn't it Southborough that jumped ahead a little bit and then had to stop?
Yep, and ours is a little different, of course. So Commonwealth and the Attorney General doesn't require like a, a home rule charter to be changed through a full revision and a vote of the legislature, but since we have special legislation, we don't fall under the, that which came available to municipalities in the nineteen seventies. So this will require an act of the legislature.
What happened in Southborough?
I thought I read that, and I think it was Southborough, that they had voted as a board to become a select board instead of a Board of Selectmen and started using that in public, like publication or their nameplates or whatever, but were told they needed to stop until it was approved by the Attorney General's Office.
Mr. Chairman, I'm taking one more bite at the end. So the Attorney General told us that the only way an executive body can be called a town council is if you're a city. Thank you. That's wonderful.
Except if you're Frank.
No, they're a city.
Oh, okay. I thought they had the city form of government, but they were still a town.
No, so city form of government meeting, we would not have town meeting, and we would move to a seven or nine-member council, a city council, who'd be the elected legislative body. And in my recommendation, the town manager would be the executive, or a mayor could be the executive in a less desirable model.
I don't want to get rid of town meeting.
All right, continue, please.
Article forty-seven is a traditional article to select the trustees of the Wright and Harlow Charitable Fund. I will mention to board members that the Wright and Harlow Charitable Fund was set up to provide and cover educational costs of less well-off or poor children. And since the charity hasn't been active in, in recent years or quite some time, we are looking for options to find, find a use of the couple thousand dollars that is within this trust fund and put it to use for the original purposes, but perhaps disband or abolish. So we've been working with council on the formalities of doing that, if it's even possible, and then we've kind of been having trouble getting trustees in recent years since there's not really an applicable use or need under today's circumstances. Article forty-eight would authorize the Board of Selectmen to be able to enter into any amendments with certain, with an intermunicipal agreement with the Town of. with certain, with an intermunicipal agreement with the town of Westboro. It was originally established in 1979 with regards to the construction and operation of the Westboro Treatment Plant. When this was put in place, the only available opportunity for amendment and execution of intermunicipal agreements was through the legislative body of Town Meeting. That has since changed in the general laws, but to be sure that we appropriately transfer that authority from Town Meeting to the Board of Selectmen, Town Council is recommending we seek approval of Article 48, which would allow that change to occur in accordance with Chapter 40, Section 4A of the general laws. And that, or the 48 article, those are the 48 articles that.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. DePaulo, go ahead.
Have you talked to the moderator about looping these again?
Not specifically, but in general, yes, that will be an approach that the moderator pursues. And Town Council has provided the appropriate documentation that will put into the Town Meeting book to allow individuals to unbundle if they're not concerned with that. So, yes. Short answer.
Any other questions? If not, is there a motion?
Move we sign the annual Town Meeting warrant.
Second.
Have been moved in second. And all those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is to review an act to appoint a member to fill a vacancy on the registrar of voters for a term set to expire on March 31st, 2023. The three individuals who've sought to fill the vacancy are Ann M. Dagel, Martha J. Gannon, and Kathleen M. Cohane. Members, Mr. LeBeau.
May I ask for a little review of the process? I'm trying to remember the process. It seems to me that there's someone recommended by the two town committees. So are we, and then there's someone who's unenrolled.
Correct.
So are we, I mean, I infer from one of the messages we received that this is the Democratic position or can you help me out with that?
You are correct with the three registrars. The state process would be to have, you know, one from each major party, the Republican and Democratic Party, and then the unenrolled member is the town clerk. And then this is a third position on there that could be filled by either party. To that end, we reached out to Republicans and Democrats where they were required to respond to us within 30 days and take a vote on the recommendation from their individual party to fill these vacancies. So although we did seek recommendations from both the Republicans and the Democrats, only the Democratic Town Party had responded.
Thank you.
Any thoughts, any nominations or conversation or, Mr. LeBeau?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I mean, we frequently find ourselves in the, in a really positive position to have excellent candidates from which to choose, but we may only choose one. Based on the materials that were submitted and personal knowledge. I mean, I could, I could certainly be supportive of any of the three, but if I was to indicate, and I will indicate who my preference is, my preference would be Ann Dagel.
Second.
I guess that was a motion.
Oh, I thought it was.
Is it motion to nominate or motion?
Motion to nominate.
Okay, it's been seconded. Any other?
Just a comment. I agree, Mr. LeBeau, this, every person who applied for this is more than qualified. It's a one-year appointment. I would hope that the other two people who were interested would seek other ways to contribute to the town. I know they have each contributed in their own way. I had the opportunity to speak with everyone. Great conversations. I did note from speaking with Ann Dagel that she was the former town clerk, for those who may not know. And she said something to me that stuck with me was that elections are embedded in her muscle memory. So I can definitely tell that there's a desire to get back in there and be part of the town clerk's team during an election cycle. So for the one-year appointment, I also would support Ann.
Anyone else?
I just want to echo that I am grateful to all three individuals for raising their hand and their willingness to participate and be considered for this. And I agree, it's hard to overlook the qualifications and experience of Mrs. Dagel, but also agree that any of the three would, would be amazing, I'm sure. But I agree with the motion to nominate Mrs. Dagel.
Okay. So I also had a chance to speak with all three and the excitement in all three's voice was great to hear. Hard choice. And I agree on Mrs. Dagel, given her experience, yet the other two also offered significant experience as well. And I truly hope that the excitement and the experience and the skills and the professionalism that they offer can also be put to benefit the town soon enough. And as we have openings in the future, I would like to stay in touch with both the others as well, should this pass, because they have a ton to offer this community. So we have a motion to nominate. Any other nominations? Do we want to?
Move we close the nominations.
Okay.
Second.
Have been moved in second to close the nominations. All those in favor, say aye.
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 So now we have one nominee. So at this point, is there a motion to appoint?
I move the board appoint Ann M. Dagel to fill a vacancy on the registrar of voters for a term to expire on March 31st, 2023.
Second.
Have been moved in second. And all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Again, thank you to the three that applied. Thanks for taking the time to apply and we hope that soon enough you'll be on another board or committee and have the opportunity to serve our town because we'd benefit greatly from that. Next item on the agenda is to review an act on the streetlight recommendations for Autobahn Drive and North Queen Sigman Ave intersection in Everett Avenue. And I'll take a crack at this, Mr. Mizikar, and you can fill in the blanks as well. So the first, in response to a request dated September 29th, 2021, and our decision or our request on October 12th, 2021, Selco has investigated the need for additional streetlights near the address at, the, let's see, need for additional streetlights are near or below the following address. So it's add one LED streetlight fixture on pole 30, North Queen Sigman Ave for the corner of Autobahn Drive to be installed as shown on the attached plan. So that was the recommendation for Selco. And with respect to Everett Ave, I believe that, so that Selco doesn't recommend a public light at this location. However, is open to considering an optional protective light in this area. So I believe that the only action at this time is with respect to the streetlight. Is that correct?
For Autobahn and North.
Yes, yes.
That is correct.
Okay. Any questions? Sure.
What is a protective light?
So I think the distinction is, is it's not a public light. So with regards to Everett Ave, if you're familiar with it, actually, the overhead and there's no overhead or underground utilities in the vicinity where they're seeking a light to be placed. So it would require an extension one way, one how, or one way or another. And the installation of a new pole. And Selco has those fees, which are, I'm actually surprised how low they are on their website for the installation of the fee and then the monthly cost of the light. And they require a three-year commitment for that. So again, the public lights go on existing infrastructure and this one is just so far removed from that that they made a different recommendation.
So a protective light is paid for by the resident? But it's on a pole and it looks like every other light?
Yes, as far as I understand.
So does it pull, I'm sorry, I have a lot of questions, I guess. Does it pull power from the resident's house?
No, it does not. There's a flat fee associated with it that's just not paid by the general fund of the town.
All right. Thanks.
It's the same as how we pay for streetlights. We pay so much a year. They don't meter it.
Right.
But there are those, like, there are bigger ones that you can get to and are really bright if you wanted to get them. But I know what you're talking about. It'd be a tough place to put a light.
Yeah.
Be a lot of expense to put a light.
First time I've seen that protective light.
So for this item, actually, in the provided materials, there'll be two motions, I guess. One relates to the installation of the light. And the second one is to, if we decide, to move that Selco review and to consider the optional protective light is what's in our materials. So two actions.
We have to work with the resident.
Yeah, okay. Is there a motion?
Move approval of, this won't load for me, so I'm kind of ad-libbing it. Move approval of all included in the streetlight recommendations.
Second.
Have been moved in second. And all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is to review an act on the street closure request from Andrew Truman, Town Engineer for Boylston Circle in relation to the installation of the new water main. Mr. Truman, good evening and welcome.
Oh, wait on. It doesn't matter. It was just a quick overlay.
It'll take a long time to wake it up.
It will be over before I do. Good evening, everyone. For the record, Andy Truman with Town Engineer. So this is a request, as we said, for the Boylston Circle. We're replacing the water main with Charlie Brothers. This is thankfully the last utility that has to go in on Boylston. So they are planning to start a couple of weeks. As I outlined in my memo, it's, they're doing it in four phases. The first phase is basically from the cemetery up to about, I think, number 53. Because none of that work involves putting in a water main bypass, so they can do it pretty straightforward. Then they're going to pull off for a couple of months and they won't be back till June after the school's out, which helps nicely. So then the next phase will be, kind of like we did the drainage, we'll do it in sections and we'll close, you know, the section that we need and we'll either send them up Gulf or we because we need to. And we will, you know, do our typical outreach to the school buses because the school will be closed, but waste management and the local residents. Have you answered any questions?
Any questions?
Seemed to work out when you did the sewer, so.
Yeah, it's luckily having the two, the two routes, so. And obviously with school being out, there will hopefully be a lot less traffic, so.
It's a pleasure of the board.
So this is it, right? This is the last thing that has to happen before the repaving?
That's right. And typically we'll probably wait.
Is that not true?
Mr. Holland.
I drive it every morning and I know I don't live on that street, but I drive it to high school. There's no way to drive it without like.
Hit the road, yes.
It's the worst part of my morning.
Yeah, and the only place you can really do is put the water main back in the old trench, which is why it takes a long time to do this.
There's no replacement.
There's no more left. Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
So Jeff Holland, DPW Director, we just were notified in the last couple of days that EverSource will be replacing the gas main sometime this winter or this fall. So it should be done this year, but that gas main is in, is old and needs to be replaced. And so we were thinking maybe we could do it at the same time we're doing the water, but then it was just way too complicated trying to get two different contractors from two different companies working within the same detour, which probably wouldn't, never would have worked right. But they're not, wouldn't be ready until fall. Then it'll be done hopefully this year.
Summer paving 2023, right?
That is the goal.
Okay. I'm holding you to that.
That's the plan.
Or you can drive my daughter to school.
Traffic coming, I imagine.
Hovercraft.
Yes.
I've not had any speeding complaints.
No speeding. No, I have not.
Any other questions? Now, is there a motion?
Move approval. Second.
Have been moved in second. And all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item, Mr. Review an act on the street closure request from Daniel Benoit for Brook Street on April 29th, 2022, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. to complete water service for lot 27 Brook Street. Mr. Mizikar?
That's straightforward.
Now, the only question is, should we, there's a rain date of the 20th. Should we also take action to include that?
That'd be great. Thank you.
Move approval including the rain date.
Second.
Have been moved in second. And all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is to review an act and the proclamation request from Kathy Musiac, 23 Bell Ridge Drive for Children's Mental Health Week. Any questions or comments?
I recall doing this last week, last year.
Yeah, yep. Is there a motion?
Move approval. Second.
Have been moved in second. And all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Now we're on to correspondence. Item number nine, email dated March 21st, 2022, from Ruth Anderson, Principal Assessor, regarding new addresses. So noted. Next item on the, is under correspondence. Item 10, email dated March 22nd, 2022, from Sanam Zahir, Director of Elementary and Middle School, Alhambra Academy, regarding invitation to Alhambra plays this weekend, which was the weekend, a couple of weekends ago, during the budget hearing. So noted. And thank you for the invitation. Next item is another email dated March 23rd, 2022, from Warren Pally, President, Pally Advertising, regarding event invitation. So noted. That is for a Mazda dealership in May. So noted. And then last item is under correspondence. Letter received March 29th, 2022, from Andy Truman, Town Engineer, regarding Freibach in Cartler Street, street betterment request. So noted. I think that's all that we have this evening. If there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Have been moved in second. And all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. We are adjourned. We will see you next Tuesday on the 12th. Thank you very much.